It's like five, four, three. Hold on, two. We're live.
Good evening. The meeting of the Aurora City Council for November 24th, 2020 is hereby called to order. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Minyamis?
Here.
Garza?
Here.
Alderman Masiacos?
Present.
Alderman Danell?
Here.
Alderman Franco?
Here.
Alderman Seville?
Here.
Alderman Hartburns?
Here.
Alderman Smith?
Here.
Alderman Bug?
Here.
Here.
Alderman Jenkins?
Here.
Alderman O'Connor?
Here.
Mayor Irvin is present.
On June 26, 2020, the Governor of Illinois issued a statewide disaster declaration related to public health concerns. As head of this body, I've determined that an in-person meeting or a meeting otherwise conducted in accordance with the Open Meetings Act is neither practical nor prudent because of disaster. This meeting will be conducted by internet teleconference without the physical presence of a quorum. And prior to the commencement of this meeting, all members of this body were verified that they can see and hear one another. I further find that the physical presence of members of the public is not feasible at this meeting due to the disaster. And more specifically, the practical difficulties associated with accommodating the public in an inaccessible hygienic location that allows for appropriate social distancing. Alternative arrangements have been made to allow the public to contemporaneously hear all discussions and roll call votes live on the city's official website, on Facebook, on YouTube, and via Zoom teleconference. Notice these arrangements have been given in accordance with the Opens Meetings Act. The public may address this body consistent with the rules previously adopted and recorded and as adapted by mayoral order. I, Mayor Richard Irvin, am physically present at our regular meeting location as defined by our resolution R-20-124. All votes shall be conducted by roll call and a verbatim record of this meeting shall be made and maintained in accordance with the Opens Meetings Act. Mr. Mohammed, can you introduce who will be giving our pledge allegiance this evening?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, City Council. Leading our pledge this evening, someone we know exceptionally well. Marking her final official city council meeting. As of next Monday, November 30th, she retires after a stellar 13 and a half year career as the Chief of Staff for the City of Aurora Alderman's Office, leading the pledge today. We'll miss her. Sandy Streber. Sandy?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And leading our invocation this evening is Seventh Ward Alderman Shaquita Hartburns.
Thank you so much. God, you are good. And your mercy endures forever. Father, you are good, even in this, all that we may be going through. But God, you're still good. We thank you, Lord, for all the doctor and nurses, my God. Those that are really heavily involved with COVID, Lord, just ask that you have your angels around them to protect them, oh God. Lord, we need a touch from you. We need you, oh God, to help. But God, just ask that you strengthen them. Give them the protection that they need, oh God, and direction. Lord, be with Carol Williams. She's the one that keep bringing me to tears, but God, I know you can dry every weep and sigh. But Lord, give us strength to even endure for Thanksgiving, oh God. Being separated from your family, but Lord, we know that you're always omnipresent. But God, we just ask that you bless this meeting. Bless all of us that's here. Bless those that's in the Army, Air Force, Marine, Navy, all of those in the military, those that are serving and those that have served. Be with the police, those that are serving, those that are serving. And God, be with the city employees, all the pain and suffering that they're going through, Lord, trying to keep us together. But Lord, be with Sandy as she retire and give her the life that she need even after retirement, even the midst of a pandemic. But God, we just ask that you bless the mayor and all that he has to go through, pull all this together. We ask it all in your name. Amen and amen.
Thank you, Alderman Hartburns, for that beautiful invocation, and thank you, Ms. Streber, for presiding a beautiful and we will definitely miss you. Let us move on to the next part. Mr. Mohammed, you want to talk a little bit about what's going on with the presentation this evening?
Yes, yes, I'm going to keep running, going, segue right back to Sandy Streber. Sandy, we'll miss you. You know, this council won't be the same, City Hall won't be the same without you. Sandy has over 45 years of experience, 28 years of those in local government, 13 and a half, right here in the city of Aurora. In 2007, she started as our Chief of Staff here at the Alderman's Office, and for the last 13 and a half years, she's been that voice, that progressive voice, that professional voice to continue moving forward in the Alderman's Office and throughout the city. We know Sandy makes a presence whenever she enters a room, and she continues to bring that through her staff and to our community. We will miss her tremendously. Mayor, you have a special presentation for Sandy.
And because of your tireless work with the city of Aurora and supporting our aldermen in the entire city for all the work that they do, and because you're the leader over there, what you do, and because I was also an alderman that worked there with you for so many years, it is my honor today as mayor to give you the Mayor's Award of Excellence. It's honored presented to Sandra Streber for your stalwart commitment to public service and forgiving of your time and talents for 13 years as Chief of Staff for the Aurora City Council. You served with professionalism, integrity, and excellence. You will be missed. And this plaque here that I'm holding up will be delivered to you tomorrow. So you can have this and hopefully probably hang it on your wall in remembrance of those, your family here at the city of Aurora. So let's give Sandy a round of applause.
Thank you.
Sandy, any comments?
Well, I have come full circle, starting in City Hall in 1973 in Chicago. And my whole life, I could look back over it, and this is what comes to my mind. I was truly blessed. I've served. I have a servant's heart. I didn't do it for fame or fortune. I did it because I loved serving. I loved helping others. I loved working, and believe it or not, with elected officials because their hearts are pretty much mirrored to what I would say my life's goal and ambition has been. Certainly, I will miss sitting in city council meetings. I rarely missed one. Over 13 and a half years I was there, and I think that that's the one thing that I will miss the most is sitting in the meetings. I will try to turn that off. I want to say to everyone that has touched my life, it's been appreciated, and thank you.
Another big round of applause for Sandy Streber. We're going to miss you, Sandy, most definitely. Congratulations and happy retirement. She retires on her birthday. How fitting. We look forward to it. Mayor, Sandy's a phenomenal woman. We have another phenomenal woman here with us this evening as well. About 10 days ago, a local nurse here at Rush Cockley Hospital, Carol Williams, made a Facebook post that really passionately pleaded to the community about taking COVID-19 serious. And she gave us an inside look of what it means to be a COVID ICU nurse here and probably throughout the country and throughout the world. Three days after her post, Mayor Irvin, last Tuesday, the City Council Committee of the Whole read her post. And that reading launched into a national media attention piece. We're so honored here to have Carol Williams with us tonight, and Mayor, you have a presentation for her as well.
Absolutely. It is my absolute honor to be able to have shared your words and your feelings with the communities of Aurora, of Illinois, and around this country. And I'd like to award to you today the Mayor's Award of Excellence. And to be honorably presented to you, Carol Williams, for being a committed, compassionate, and concerned healthcare hero who goes above and beyond to serve her patients, their families, and our community. Thank you for being an example of excellence and empower to our great city. And this plaque here, Carol, will be presented to you. We'll deliver it to you tomorrow. And I just wanted to let you know that we really appreciate the opportunity to be able to share what you see and your coworkers and doctors and folks that you deal with every day, what you see on the front line and what we're dealing with in this pandemic, and help us to understand what we need, how we need to do our part. So thank you very much.
Big round of applause for Carol Williams, everyone. Yesterday, November 23rd, was Public Health Thank You Day, National Public Health Thank You Day. We extend that right into today as we honor our own healthcare hero, Carol Williams. Carol, we'll turn it over to you for comments.
Oh my, oh my goodness. Wow, I was definitely not expecting that at all. You're here thanking me and honoring me, and I'm so thankful to you for finding true value in those words that I wrote and sharing them with our community on your, first on your social media platform, and then at your meeting. I was, even now, like I'm brought a little bit emotional because although those are my words, those are the words of my work family at Rush Cockley. Everything that I wrote is everything that we see, that we feel, what's going on right now, and I am so grateful that you have helped, truly have helped share this message. That I was just hoping to reach a few people when I wrote that, and it's reached thousands of people now nationally, and I'm just, I'm so thankful to you, Mayor, for helping do that, and wow, just thank all of you for the kind words, the outpouring of love for our healthcare team, our healthcare workers across the country during this pandemic has been nothing short of amazing. And just thank you so much for hearing us.
You're very welcome. Another round of applause, Carol Williams.
Thank you so much.
Amazing hero.
Definitely. Thank you. Thank you for everything, Carol. We appreciate you. We know we sent you flowers at the office last week. We'll follow up with the plaque this week as well. Please give best to the team over at Rush Cock.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Carol. Thanks for all that you do, and thank you, Mayor, and to the city council. Mayor, for our next presentation, we'll give a change update. I will be joined by a number of staff members to assist with the update for their specific parts. As we look here on November 24th, literally five months, five months since you, Mayor, first launched the change initiative, three months since we gave our first update, and we've made some significant headway on the Change Reform Initiative. Just to put in context and as a reminder, we began with four key actions under what the mayor called the Phase One of Change. We always knew it was going to be additional phases. We continue to grow. We continue to progress. Under Phase One, bullet points one and two to review the APD use of force policy and the APD training policy. Again, this was a national initiative under President Obama's direction for cities to pull the use of force policy, to review them with the community, to offer suggestions and to make it a public process. We did just that. Not only did we do the use of force policy, we did the APD training policy as well. From there came 60 recommendations in which the APD has responded and begin to implement a number of those, everything available under the Change website. Another part of the reform initiative was the conducting audit for body cameras. That was the mayor's request five months ago. And we fast forward five months later, we're well into that process to begin a very significant phase of that approval process and finalization process in just a few days here, and we'll have Commander Dorsef and Mr. Piggies to explain more. And then finally, the fourth piece was to research the implementation of a civilian review board. We'll talk more about that tonight, but your initial focus of researching the implementation of a board brings it before the city council tonight for approval. We'll turn it over to Commander Mike Dorsef now and Mr. Michael Piggies to share more about the body camera project.
Thank you, Clayton. Good evening, everybody. So I'd like to give you an update on where we're at with this body cam evaluation pilot phase. The screen, you'll see this is kind of a snapshot of kind of the project, project schedule, and some of the risks that we've encountered. This is the Exxon slide. Following that will be the WatchGuard slide. But I'll kind of just talk in plain English and go through the timeline. Most recently, on the 18th of November, we got Exxon onsite with their equipment for training. They trained both the backend users, which are going to be our records people that do the redacting FOIA and sharing to the state's attorney's office. And also that same day, they trained the end users, which will be the officers who are wearing the equipment and how to activate events, upload the video. Again, that occurred on Tuesday, November 18th. Following day on the 19th, we had WatchGuard in for the same training, backend records employees at the beginning of the day, and then we had the officers trained on their equipment later that day. So additionally, other than the camera equipment that the officers are wearing and the backend software for the redacting and sharing of the video and viewing of the video, there's some equipment that needed to be installed in the squad cars. The purpose of this equipment is to, for both Exxon and WatchGuard body cameras to activate on the same triggers that are used in the squad cameras currently. So when officers turn on their overhead lights, it will now activate this squad camera that's already out and deployed, but it will simultaneously activate their body camera. That's going to take a little bit of time to do some installations, and we ran into kind of the holidays, people on vacation down at Central Garage. So that equipment got to Central Garage on the 19th, and they kind of started looking at the installations on the 20th of November and started doing some preliminary installations of both the Exxon and the WatchGuard, and they're installed a little bit different, and they have different timeframes. The Exxon equipment, they're going to install first. It takes a little bit less time. They're doing 10 cars with that. Then WatchGuard will get installed in the next 10 cars. That takes a little bit longer installation time. Due to some of the manpower issues down there with vacations, it's not going to be, both Exxon and WatchGuard won't be installed in these squads, and their target date is a week from this, or this coming Monday, November 30th. That's tentative. That's what they're shooting for. As you can see, there's kind of some risks that we ran into on the project timeline. The project timeline originally for this pilot phase is November 9th to December 6th. If we get the equipment installed on November 30th, this Monday, officers could start wearing the equipment the following day on Tuesday, which is December 1st. That doesn't give us enough time, so we're already a little behind in this timeline. So we're about two weeks plus where we're a little bit off of the original timeline. So if we get it installed on the 30th, officers start wearing the equipment on the first. This pilot phase, the way we have designed, is just two weeks of them wearing it in the field. 10 officers will be wearing Exxon, 10 will be wearing WatchGuard for a week, then they switch. So really, the two weeks, if you look at it, it's really only a week evaluation for each of these officers with each of these systems. That is not an industry standard minimum from what both Exxon and WatchGuard are saying is 30 days. So we're really compressing this timeline. So if we continue with this two-week compressed pilot phase, that would put us at December 15th, which would be the end of the two weeks. And then we have evaluation forums we've created that will go to the end users, both the officers and the the records clerks that are working on the backend, and they will evaluate and score the two vendors when we compile those and get those, WatchGuard, I'm sorry, the body camera implementation team will kind of review those and at some, you know, evaluate them, and that's what we use to make our eventual final selection. That's kind of the timeline and the risk we ran into. One other thing I'd like to point out with the timeline, November 9th is one, this 30-day window we had to get this project pilot phase started and completed, and we didn't even get that equipment and the officers onsite and trained until the end of Business Day on November 19th. So, and then now we're waiting for the equipment to get installed in the cars. So we're really behind before they even get a chance to start wearing these. We're going to be three weeks into the original timeline. And then I don't know if Mike has anything else he'd like to add from a project management perspective?
No, Commander, you covered it quite well. I just reiterating what you said, even before we started, we identified the fact that we thought the 30 days was actually a little too compressed as was outlined in the resolution. And again, that was an aspiration date. I think based on what you've mentioned in terms of the equipment installations and the delivery, and also the testing and gathering the feedback from the officers and the two different groups, we're looking now probably towards, I would say tentatively, to have, you know, the feedback, you know, gathered, aggregated, and put together and scored and backed probably around, I would say, December 18th or the week of the 21st. So that's one of the decisions or points we wanted to bring up to, that we brought up to Mrs. Alexandra to the mayor's office, and also we wanted to bring up to city council in terms of, you know, that original date of December 6th, we're going to go past that, and we wanted to make everyone aware of that and just get kind of address any questions or concerns with regards to that around the pilot governance piece.
Thank you, Commander. Thank you to our say, oh, Mike Piggies, as we update from the change initiative on the body camera process. You also will look at the civilian review board. Again, you know, we did two different processes for the civilian review board, which is unique in and of itself. First, we handled the resolution approval process simply because we wanted to make certain that the community knew we listened, we heard you, you know, we were committed to this resolution. We did that in three meetings very publicly. You know, transparency was a key focus on that. From Tuesday, September 29th through October 13th, approval of the resolution. After the resolution, we moved to the ordinance approval process that began first with a presentation at, again, PHST Committee, and then through the normal wrap committee process last week, approved for consent from the Committee of the Whole, and tonight comes before the full city council. Seven opportunities, seven public opportunities, seven public transparent opportunities to talk about, to discuss the civilian review board, to take feedback. Again, we thank all of those who did the work on the backend, those who weighed in from a community perspective and allowed us to shape the resolution and more importantly, shape the ordinance that we brought before the city council, and that's up for approval this evening. I'll turn it over now to Mr. Alexandra as we kind of put it back in context to look at where we go from here.
Thank you, Clayton. Can everyone see me okay? So we wanted to hit on a few points regarding the civilian review board as we are poised this evening to consider its passage. First and foremost, this kind of process and the outcome and the recommendations contained both within the proposed ordinance and the attachments, especially the infographic that you've seen that describes the process as it is now and the process going forward really truly fulfills an important change commitment. This will help the entire community have confidence in Aurora's ability to ensure the integrity of APD process, not only process to discipline, where we could, in a transparent yet fully informed way, vet out any bad actors, make corrective actions as needed. And so based on where we're at today versus where we will be with a civilian review board, we will be instilling community confidence in APD and with, again, the ability to course correct as we go forward. But that's not the only element that we have built into the ordinance. That's not the only role. It's certainly a very critical, necessary role from listening to the community and in all the discussions that we've had, both as a community and all the opportunities, but also the public sessions Clayton talked about, as well as the internal team that worked on this. That was a consistent theme. So this is also clearly this kind of independent involvement. I apologize. Can you see me now?
Yep.
Thank you. So this, clearly, this independent involvement by our community members who will be on the civilian review board is really a tremendous advancement. It's cutting edge. It's collaborative, and we believe it's, as I said last meeting, it's a compilation of the best practices from the research we did and the discussions we had with other successful and impactful CRBs in other diverse communities like Aurora. I touched briefly on the fact that this does reform the current process with clear, consistent community input and the ability for the community, the way we are establishing this, to reach out directly to the CRB, to file complaints, to ask questions, to raise issues, and not just disciplinary issues, but anything to do with the APD hiring process, recruitment process. There were a number of things that came out from the community listening sessions, as well as from our research that really pointed to those successful CRBs were ones that were multifaceted, that were set up transparently with all the tools necessary to do the job in the process that we have set up. So that includes a website, that includes outreach and other critical responsibilities. Lastly, to just remind everyone, as a home rule community, this ordinance can be retooled over time. It can be revisited. If there are aspects of this that aren't working as we thought, we can revisit and make the appropriate changes. So there is flexibility, but the key for us is we would like to move this as recommended. Again, we believe it's based on best practice, but actual achievable, there are achievable records to look at in the other communities, and we also have made some advancements to it. So we didn't just do a cookie cutter approach because this is what we believe will lead to the most impactful and effective role for a CRB in our community and within our department. So also, I've been made aware that there is some information out there, and we want to really clarify and not have any misunderstanding on what some of the aspects of the ordinance that will impact the creation of the CRB are in reality. So I wanted to just address some of those to clarify that, and then I know there's a separate item on the agenda, and we certainly will have opportunity, if necessary, to discuss this in more detail. But the concept of appointment of the nine board members, it's clearly enumerated in the ordinance that's proposed that the mayor will appoint, subject to the advice and consent of the city council. So if you recall, we are setting this up in Article Two of our city code in Boards and Commissions section. So we are making this CRB the equal of all of our other significant boards and commissions. And so as in those, this is not solely the mayor's appointment only. It's mayor's appointment with the advice and consent by the city council. Similarly, on the opposite side, the issue of removal of any members, the council has the ability to overturn any removal. But the threshold to remove is enumerated, and again, there is a check and balance with, as there is an appointment, there is a check and balance for the possibility of removal from the CRB. There also was raised a concern of membership eligibility, specifically persons formerly incarcerated. The restrictions contained in the ordinance are limited to certain crimes. The design, the limitation is designed to limit bias on the part of a member on the civilian review board. Similarly, I think there was a concern about the role of a liaison assigned by the chief to the board, that the liaison would draft written findings and recommendations of the board. This is in fact a clerical staffer assignment, no different than other boards and commissions established by the city where we have liaisons from staff. We sometimes have clerical staffers who are assigned to capture the minutes, capture any rulings, and help the other boards and commissions process their business at hand. And so there is no question, the decision or whatever is given to the or whatever is given to the staffer, uh, will belong solely to the CRB based on their independent deliberation. So neither the liaison, whether he's sworn or clerical, will have influence or the ability to impact the CRB's independent deliberation or decision-making. Uh, we also are looking, I mentioned other roles for the CRB and one of the other critical roles, we want feedback and we are encouraging members to provide recommendations so that underrepresented persons may be recruited as APD officers. That came out loud and clear through the change initiative that our police department, our fire department, our city as a, our city government as a whole needs to look more like our community. And so the CRB will take a very important role in, uh, assisting and informing APD on the process of recruitment, specifically geared towards those underrepresented, uh, persons in our community. So we're very, um, enthusiastic about that role that the CRB will play. Uh, in addition, um, to that end, the review board will also engage the public in program, the, the public in programming and opportunities in relation to APD. One of the goals is the ordinance has been from the beginning to have an informed civilian board bring matters related to the police, good or bad. And the reason for that is we again, heard the public loud and clear and we share in the need to basically bring the police department into the sunshine, whether it's the disciplinary process or any of the other recruitment or other issues that may be raised. Uh, we have learned throughout this process that the police are not necessarily the enemy. Uh, in fact, the police department has been extremely cooperative and helpful and played a very significant role, not only on the internal team, but in reaching out to other communities and other effective CRBs to make the connections for us to be able to produce the ordinance that's before you. So, um, sunshine and transparency and accountability are definitely built in to this ordinance. Two more items, the, um, issue of no allowance for criminal law attorneys to be members somehow that, um, is seen as some kind of unfair or, uh, unacceptable limitation. On the contrary, this was discussed at length uh, during many of the reviews and we looked at what other, uh, CRBs have done as well. But really we are looking to the members of the community who are going to step forward and ask to be on the CRB to use their independence and their intelligence to make assessments of the facts and evidence that come to them, independent of any of the other steps before on a complaint. And so to say that we somehow need a certain type of attorney, otherwise it will impugn the independence or integrity of the members frankly, is an insult to their intelligence and their independence. And I know we have community members who will step up and be terrific, uh, independent and intelligent members of this board. The other concern with criminal attorneys is by nature, they are oppositional and they may obtain sensitive information about police officers who they may be cross-examining in the near future. So to avoid any conflict or any potential bias, that combined with the role that we expect the civilian review board members to play is the reason why we did not, uh, allow in the ordinance for criminal law attorneys to be members. Uh, lastly, um, I'm not sure what this means, but it was passed to me that the board can only initiate further inquiries with a recommendation from the liaison. Again, the liaison or liaisons are going to be either a sworn officer or and/or a staffer to help expedite and explain process, explain procedure, but not at all get into the decision-making deliberation. We've set it up again to be an independent source that our community can go to with complaints and any concerns about APD without having to go through APD. These independent eyes and ears will promote accountability and transparency by making sure issues again will be in the sunshine instead of in the closed process that currently exists. So hopefully that, um, has addressed many of the concerns raised or clarified some issues. Uh, I do want to thank, uh, not only our internal team, but Judge Kim Bright, Alderman Jenkins, Alderman Yamas, um, our outside attorney, John Murphy, for all of the effort, all the input, as well as APD chief and command staff for really embracing this process and running with it and getting us to this, what I'm going to consider a historic moment, uh, today. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alexandra. Uh, historic indeed. Where do we go from here to the city council and to the public? If approved tonight, uh, we'll open the application period, uh, Tuesday, December 1st at 8:00 a.m. and close it at noon on December 22nd. That is a three-week window to apply with, uh, an additional week for information and promotion prior to the application process being opened. Again, efforts of transparency and fairness across the board. If approved tonight, the news release will go, will be published tomorrow. You know, city seeking applicants for its first civilian review board, application period. What happens in that window, for transparency yet again, on Tuesday, December 8th and December 22nd, the December city council meetings, we will announce the applicants, uh, first round on December 8th and then again on the 22nd, public names, once again, full transparency so that individuals will know who's applying and where we stand with those as the, at the close uh, of the application process on the 22nd, but even before that midterm, uh, on December 8th. We'll take the opportunity then for the next few weeks over the holiday, uh, to review and, uh, working with the mayor and his team, um, to announce the finalists. That will happen in the mayor's report on January 5th. Uh, actually the time's 5:00 p.m. on January 5th. Um, and then we'll take those finalists and go through an interview period. That interview period will be January 6th through January 16th. That is a 10-day window of interviews of the finalists. And then finally, as with all of our boards and commissions, those proposed members of the board, proposed members of the CRB will presented, will be presented at the wrap meeting on Tuesday, January 19th, 2021. Again, city council, to the mayor, to the community, our goal is to be as open and as transparent with the process as possible. This schedule will also be published in the news release that is published tomorrow. Application open next Tuesday at 8:00 a.m. A condition if the approval tonight with the city council for the CRB as we go forward. Uh, really quickly, uh, wrap it up here. Change continues. We always said this was phase one. We knew phase one would focus on police reform and where do we go from there, turns that into phase two and beyond. The next phases will implement what we're talking about in phase one. It doesn't stop here. Body cameras are still going on. Clearly, uh, CRB is still in process, those 60 recommendations and so many other things we learned still in process. Uh, we have the mayor's key administrative initiatives, uh, that we're still, uh, check marking and working down the list. Of course, interior three mitigations with limited, public gatherings will limit some of the things we were going to do publicly, but we'll keep on pivoting and doing some things, do some things virtually, still keeping the focus, uh, on the initiative. What we've seen clearly, without question, uh, is the need for this city hall, this administration to buy a paramount part of the nation diversity, equity and inclusion. And although it's always been that, you know, we will definitely make, uh, even more deliberate, uh, and focused, uh, uh, effort on that. You'll see that efforts coming through city hall, uh, internally and citywide. You'll see, uh, DEI initiatives happening throughout the city. But we're very proud that the change initiative just has not attracted attention here locally. It's had, attracted attention from our, our fellow municipalities in the Fox Valley region and those all throughout the state. We've kind of talked about it throughout the last couple of months, um, just different state departments that have reached out, that have applauded our efforts, knowing that it's, uh, much like Alex Alexander said, it's cutting edge. Uh, and we really were one of the first communities under this banner to step out and do just that. Let me talk really briefly about one of the state ride initiatives we're, we're, we're happy to be a part of. Illinois House Resolution 390 created the Commission on the Social Status of Black Males. Uh, this commission studies the social conditions of black males, develop strategies to remedy or assist in remedying serious adversities and make recommendations to improve the educational, social, economic and employment opportunities of black males. You know, when you look at what we're doing with the change initiative, just as the state has done, uh, we see how we can take the lead and be leaders in so many given topics, you know, under the banner of change. Tonight, we're very proud to announce Mayor Irvin, uh, and to the city that Governor Pritzker has appointed Mayor Irvin to serve and to help lead the Commission on the Social Status of Black Males. Again, placing the city of Aurora, uh, in such a position that we serve as a benchmarking city on a number of topics and we all know those topics A to Z. This again puts us, uh, right in the range, uh, of excellence as we continue to pursue what we can do on a diversity, equity and inclusion, uh, basis. Congratulations, Mayor, on your appointment. I know a news release is coming out tomorrow. The mayor will help to lead a team of 14 commissioners all over the state. Uh, and we are excited for the city to Aurora, city of Aurora to serve, uh, in administrative capacity as we help the commission on the social status of black males achieve the mission, the vision right here from the city of Aurora all throughout the state of Illinois. We're super excited, uh, about that. Change continues. We're not only helping Aurora's necessary growth and empowerment, we're helping the state of Illinois's uh, growth and empowerment as well. We don't have an acronym for that yet, but I'm sure it's coming soon enough. But we are excited as we move forward. We closed my 60-day report with Father Leek's, uh, quote. In the past, we had a couple of meetings and that was the end of it. This time seems different. Oh, Leek was right. It was different. Wasn't about checking boxes, wasn't just meetings. Uh, he knew that we were on the precipice of something pretty amazing and we see that just the same. Tonight I conclude with the words of Edward Ash. Uh, Edward was, uh, one of our, our, our community members at the recommendation session who suggested we need to have community listening sessions, that we need to talk, we need to build. After one of those community listening sessions that he proposed, uh, he said in that quote, you can read through, uh, I must be honest. I believe they are listening and that is the first part of moving forward by they, the mayor, the police chief, the city. It was a different understanding from the city officials and police that spoke today. We must continue for progress and peace for all blessings. As we go into the Thanksgiving, uh, week, we see clearly that, you know, we focus on gratitude and peace and certainly under the change banner, progress and peace certainly has to continue to be a focus and a mission. That's why phase one continues and we move into future phases as well. And Mayor, that concludes our report.
Thank you, Senator. Any questions on the presentation? Let me go back to, uh, the presentation as, uh, presented by Mr. Muhammad.
Yes.
Uh, Alderman Jenkins.
Yeah, um, with regards to the application, uh, will people be able to go to the, uh, uh, city website and fill out the application and submit it electronically?
Yes, sir. It will be electronic application, uh, again, open December 1st, provided it's approved tonight. Um, right off the change website, it's going to be two places. One, the traditional change website backslash change, also on the boards and commission site. Click right there and apply right there online.
Okay.
Alderman Smith.
Yes, um, I have a question. So what is the process that we're using to, um, alert potential applicants? Um, of what, what's going to be expected of them, the training and their commitment?
When we launch the change website, that's a great question, Alderman. Uh, we outline all of that on the website. That's why it was so key for us to take this next period of time after approval tonight, if it's approved, to make sure we promote appropriately, including the duties and responsibilities of any of the commissioners.
Thank you.
Alderman Lofsky.
Yeah, um, it, it seems to me like it may be a little difficult though, Clayton, to do it before the first, which is next week. But if you can do it, that's great. But I have a question, um, I guess to Alex, and I do appreciate all the work everyone's done on this. Um, I got a lot of emails and about the, uh, makeup of the nine-member board. How, um, it should more be like some of the other cities, which I can't seem to find, wasn't posted in legislature tonight, but I know it was earlier when we started talking about how some of the cities have like, like we have the, uh, Aurora Hispanic Heritage Board Advisory Board. We have the African-American Heritage Advisory Board. Out of those nine members, many of those would automatically be the head of that board or someone designated by that board. So I can't, I think it was Oak Park or Evanston had that. But that's feedback I'm getting and I think that would be good to have automatically, you know, some diversity, inclusion positions, um, already appointed. Much like the library board used to have.
Well, we, we did take that into consideration. However, we thought to be fully transparent and provide an opportunity to all without any predetermined seats, if you will. Uh, we thought we would design it and this is one of the ways we might be a little different to start. And that is to not preclude anyone from applying so that we're not automatically assuming anything. So we're starting out with a clean slate, allowing folks within, as I described, the, the different eligibility to apply and then it's not just up to the mayor, but then it'd be up to the advice and consent of the council to approve them. So, uh, we want nine independent community members. We've already had a tremendous outreach of folks, um, already requiring. So we firmly believe that we will wind up with a very diverse representative group for this inaugural board. Uh, then once, as, as I mentioned several times, once this goes on, uh, we have the ability to tweak, to change, to course correct as things go forward. So to your question, Alderman Lofsky, we did see that in some places, but we felt, given the, um, the, uh, community input and our diversity across the board, we're very comfortable that we will attract a very inclusive, um, diverse group of, uh, board members to bring to you for your approval.
Alderman Franco.
Yeah, I have a question. Who will be reviewing the applicants prior to the, I mean, to the city council for approval?
Well, it's going to, uh, take the same process that happens when we staff or need to, uh, consider anybody for any of the other boards and commissions. So it will be, uh, primarily the mayor's office vetting. Um, we're also going to take probably a cross-section. I think we're still working out the final details, Clayton, but I'm, I believe there will be a cross-section from within the committee that helped craft this so that we get another set of eyes uh, and ears to it and, uh, before, you know, and then ultimately it will be the mayor's call with input from staff to then bring candidates forward for your advice and consent.
There would be those other eyes. Thank you again to Alderman Yamas, Alderman Jenkins for serving on that, uh, you know, to continue to assist in the process.
Alderman, Alderman Siville.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Uh, I too want to thank, uh, both Alex and Clayton for their good presentation. Uh, very, uh, explanatory. Um, my, one of the questions that I have with regard to the appointment process, I did receive a, uh, a couple of inquiries from people over the weekend, uh, regarding their concern on the mayor's, uh, capacity to appoint. Uh, my question is, um, how do other communities appoint? Uh, and is there another way that we're not really familiar with? I mean, uh, what we know historically is the mayor appoints in the city with the city, with the advice and, and city consent, uh, of the city council. Um, is there another mechanism that we don't know about that other communities have done? To give us an example.
We, we reviewed all of them and we found again, since we're putting this in article two and we're treating it like with the, with the gravitas and the importance of all of our other commissions, this is not an ad hoc committee, this is not some, uh, very lightly set up or low expectation board or commission. This is probably one of the most critical boards we're going to create and propose and what we're asking them to do. And so the last thing we want to do is, for example, politicize it or make it overly committed in one specific area. Uh, we again, went through and looked at best practices. We talked to these other communities, the, we met with them and we have, we believe crafted through our committee, uh, a tremendous jumping off point to start. Uh, again, uh, is, is, um, every widget produced perfect? Not all the time, but we're fortunate in that this is not a one-time and done, never to be revisited situation. So we will monitor, we will make sure that it's, the board is fulfilling its obligations that's set out in this ordinance. And we have the ability, you have the ability, the community has the ability to provide input and if necessary, seek correction or change. Uh, I mean, this was born out of the change initiative. Change doesn't stop and I think we've all committed. Change doesn't stop, and I think we've all committed. You know, we have an outstanding police department. There's no question about that. We want to keep it at that high level. So that's why we've put this board together purposefully to give them the best training, the best information, the best technology so that the public can feel confident as they begin operations. Their respite for complaints confidentially, without any bias, without any concern about anything getting swept out of the rug or falling through the cracks. This is why we purposely set this up that way. And the city will support with resources, their website, and all the other outreach. You know, let's not forget, we have all committed to increasing our recruitment efforts. Historically, black colleges, school fairs, starting out at younger ages. We want to make Aurora a destination for all who want to work as a police officer or a fireman, and especially trying to improve our underrepresentation and help our departments look more like our community. There's great value in that.
And Alderman Sville, to your, Alderman Sville, to your point on a, a process, what we, and this one is adding that layer of publicly announcing those who've applied. You know, we've not done that for other boards. Process, so people from the community and all, Alderman, will be able to see on December eighth and the twenty-second, the entire list of those who applied. And of course, we can do with that as you will, whether it's lobbying the mayor, calling the city council members. At least the public knows who applied. Again, that has not happened in other boards or commissions, at least in my years here.
Okay. And then secondly, Mayor, if I may follow up. I received a inquiry from a constituent. He had reminded me that when his wife participated and joined the Citizens Police Academy, that she was required to go over, to have a background check. Was anything like that considered in, in the, the membership of this as well?
Yes. Yes.
And before I go on to ask a question, Alderman, Danelle, Alderman Bug, I think you're having some speaker issues speaking. Can you just go, go on, on mute for a minute, and we'll figure out what your issues are in a second. I think IT's working on that. Alderman Danelle.
Thank you, Mayor. I too received a, a number of inquiries today. I did have an opportunity to speak to one of the constituents, and, and then I actually forwarded that information onto Alex, and I want to thank Alex for a wonderful job you've done this evening, trying to address those specific concerns that, that I got today. This is a historic and very important thing that we're doing here. What I also appreciate, and I want everyone else to appreciate, is that we think we have a good program here. We are home real world community, and, and we can make changes to this in the future if, if we find something that's not working up to standard. So thank you for your presentation, Alex. I know you had a lot of help from other staff. Also want to thank Alderman Jenkins and Alderman Yamas for sitting in and, and helped put this together for us.
Mr. Mayor, can I add one thing that I think is germane? I want to also stress, in the ordinance, we have geographic diversity, and we believe the geographic spread, and this is one of the more innovative things we came up with as a team, that that will help promote diversity. In other words, west of the river, east of the river. And so we believe, again, that that is going to help with the diversity and the representation the way it's been designed.
Thank you. All right. Well, we will pick this up again when we come up on that item to vote on throughout the agenda. But let's go on to public comment. Madam Clerk, do we have any members of the public wishing to offer public comment?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Will you read the rules for public comment, please, ma'am?
Pursuant to the Open Meetings Act, all persons shall be permitted an opportunity to address public officials under the rules established and recorded by the council. Under our rules, any person may address the city council for up to three minutes with a maximum of thirty minutes allotted for all public comment. No person other than the timekeeper or the chair for the purpose of maintaining order may interrupt a person recognized for public comment during his or her comments. Members of the city council shall not engage with nor respond to a speaker during the time set aside for public comment. Staff is directed to follow up with members of the public with respect to any concerns raised during public comment within the scope of the city's authority following the adjournment of this meeting.
Madam Clerk, before you call the first name, let me state that there is a total of thirty minutes, three zero, set up for public comment. We currently have eleven people signed up for public comment. That would make, take it to thirty-three minutes, which is over the thirty-minute limit by ordinance. So I would ask that all speakers, if you don't need to take your full three minutes to give consideration to your fellow speakers this evening, so we can get everybody in. Madam Clerk, will you call the first speaker?
Mr. John Lesh.
Mr. Lesh, can you hear my voice?
John Lesh. Hi, this is John Lesh.
All right, sir, you have, yes, you do. You have three minutes, starting now.
I've read the civilian review board ordinance, and I'm here to ask the council to table this item, send it back to committee, and draft a stronger ordinance with true independent oversight. The ordinance falls short of addressing two primary goals. One goal is rebuilding trust between the community and police. The other goal is providing independent taxpayer oversight. Aurora has a number of excellent policemen and policewomen, but if one person abuses that power, the taxpayers are on the hook for lawsuits affiliated with abusive power. In the same way that laws against drunk driving have significantly reduced the number of DUIs, this board could prevent police abuse of power and save taxpayers money. So I support the effort to have it. And I do like that the board is also tasked with providing direction on how to improve relations between police and public. I think there's still so much work that needs to be done in this department. But here are some concrete suggestions to make the board stronger. One, I think we need to change the name from civilian review board to independent oversight board. Number two, to be effective, this board needs to be independent of elected officials, the police department, and union influence. The board should be able to hire their own attorney, investigator, and HR consultant. The board and their investigator should have subpoena power to obtain unredacted documents, interviews, videos, official reports, and have the ability to interview witnesses independently of the information provided by the APD. Third, the board needs to be able to budget, to pay for their investigators, and to provide a stipend for those who serve on the board. I believe that Section Two dash eight two six, Item A, needs to be amended to give power to the board to hire their own attorney and investigator. That budget can be created with existing funds that currently pay for an internal review. This should come with no cost to the taxpayers, but simply reappropriate resources from internal review to independent review. I agree strongly that we need to protect the identity of our employees from the public, and the board members need to maintain full confidentiality of all personnel matters. Fourth, we, you've talked a lot about composition, and I do believe that the board would be stronger if it included someone from our community who has experienced police brutality, and possibly even an inactive retired police officer. Finally, we need to do more to make sure that this recommendations by the board are upheld, not ignored. And I understand that a board needs to adhere to guidelines of employment law and union contract. But this ordinance gives pow, gives the board power to make recommendations, but their decisions are not binding. And I want to close on this note. In the Beacon News, the APD spokesperson, Paris LaBelle, said that the board would be, quote, "the final step in the discipline process." But this is not true. According to the ordinance, the police chief holds the final decision in the discipline process, not the board. And when the APD spokesperson is putting misinformation out there, how do we build trust with the community?
Your three minutes concluded. Yep. Clerk, will you call the next speaker?
Mr. Edward Ash.
Mr. Ash, can you hear my voice? Mr. Ash, can you hear my voice?
Yes, yes, I can hear you.
You have three minutes.
Okay. Yes, I can hear you. First of all, I hear a lot of talk about the ability to change. First of all, we need to get this right the first time and not rely on changing and hurting people in the long run, and thinking that we can make it up later on. First of all, I want to tell you all what we want and make it clear. We want lawyers. We want independent lawyers picked by the people on the board. We don't want any police involvement. We don't want any police involvement on a citizen review board or ex-police officers. The same way why they don't want ex-felons and people with certain offenses to be on the, on the board also. Also, we should be able to hold people who are part of that accountable, like state attorneys and people who are following up on the paperwork also. Also, we need compensation for the boards for people who are on it. Now, I'm just going to read a little message from, from the people of the community. At the onset, there were several individuals, at the organi, at the onset, there were several individuals and organizations that voiced the need for a citizen review board. This review board should not be led by, led by organized staff or influenced by local government. The purpose is for the citizens to take their power back to the communities. Police to police, hold local officials, and the state attorney's office must be held accountable for their actions or lack of actions when it comes to the review arrest reports and core practices by the police. The wealth, growth, progress, the culture of policing, and quality of life for citizens of Aurora are serious matters, which requires the people to get involved and make change, not be given false hopes and pacifiers, which is what the current proposal suggests. The problem is that we asked for the city review board. We demanded it, but we never needed the city's permission. What we were asking for was their cooperation to comply with the demands and the findings of the review boards, to come to take our complaints and concerns seriously and have the proper legal representation with the review board to hold the state attorney's office and the police accountable. Our job is to create the review board ourselves without elected board members and officials so we can push forward and do what is right by the community. Thank you, and blessings to all. Power to the people.
Clerk, can you call the next speaker?
Crystal Ornelas.
Crystal Ornelas, can you hear my voice?
Um, yes, I can.
You have three minutes beginning now.
Good evening, city council. My name is Crystal Ornella. I have worked at Furry Babies at the Fox Valley Mall since we opened our doors almost ten years ago. We are a small family-owned business. We take pride in our goal to provide our customers with happy, healthy babies. Our mission begins with our local breeders located throughout the Midwest. The moment a customer walks to our store, we showcase videos of our yearly breeder trips we take our staff on. We continue to welcome regulations that raise the standard of animal welfare. We hope we can achieve this by working together on something balanced and reasonable. We hope to continue to serve the community of Aurora for many years to come. I would love to extend an invitation to come visit our store and see the passion that we have for the job that we do. Due to COVID, I understand your reservations for coming to the mall. I'm more than happy to do a virtual walkthrough via Zoom. Thank you so much for your time this evening. I look forward to being a source for any questions you may have on how our business works. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Clerk, can you call the next speaker?
Dr. Vincent Gaddis.
Dr. Gaddis, can you hear my voice? Dr. Gaddis. Dr. Vince Gaddis. All right, we'll, we'll put him to the end and go to the next speaker.
There you go.
Oh, oh, there we go, Dr. Vince Gaddis.
Okay. Sorry, sorry. I didn't, I didn't know I had to unmute.
It's all good, all good. You got three minutes, starting now.
Yeah. First of all, I, I do think that this is a positive step forward to establish the civilian review board or the citizens' review board. However, as the speakers before me have indicated, there, there are going to be questions in building trust between the police and the community. And one of the questions we've been having from the beginning is the question of who has the ability to not just discipline, but in the scenario of the citizens' review board, the review board, as the ordinance is written, recommends, but is not even really equal in power, if you will, in making the recommendations for discipline as the chief or the union. So the, well, I would want to ask a question, but I know I can't. But the question would be, how do we approach or how will this citizens' review board be able to amend, contribute to, recommend, or have the ability to enforce some kind of change that gives it more, not just more independence, but a way to have its recommendations have really equal weight as the union, the police union, or the chief? As written, the ordinance does not do that, and I think that is a significant issue. I do appreciate the work on the question of recruitment, the issues of looking at training, and the background policies that the department has. But I do hope that this board has the ability with the city council and the mayor to eventually transform to see where it does not have enough of a say in these matters, and then make those changes to do that. But I, again, I would say I do agree that creating the board is a very positive step forward. I would hope that the board would eventually be able to have more independence and power as time goes on. I think the earlier speakers highlighted why that is a significant issue. But I applaud the work that's been done, and
Your three minutes is up. Thank you. Clerk, can you call the next speaker?
Erica Garcia.
Ms. Garcia, can you hear my voice? Ms. Garcia? Ms. Erica Garcia, are you on mute? Mr. Anderson, do you see Ms. Garcia on with us?
She's muted, sir.
Ms. Garcia. Yeah, all right. Ms. Garcia, you have, that's okay. You have three minutes beginning now.
Okay, thank you. Yes. So my name is Erica, and I've lived most of my life in the sixth ward. My comment is regarding the civilian review board. So the city of Aurora deserves a real progressive aim towards change, and not just that catchy slogan that we hear so often. We shouldn't rush to impose an imperfect board. The civilian review board cannot function at its fullest potential when it has stipulations imposed that limit its ability to produce real substantial police accountability. The civilian review board has to have the power to impose independent review for police misconduct investigations. We must outline those nine board members to include individuals who have experienced the criminal justice system firsthand within this board. Just like the city of Aurora's diverse populations, we need to represent all the constituents on this board, everyone's voice manners, and each has the power to bring in a new, unique perspective to the conversations of police misconduct or problematic policies that we see in our police department. We need to reserve room in the table for educated individuals in the criminal justice system. And I don't only mean trained paralegals, but also those that have studied the real history of slave patrols, aftermath of the crime bill, or the war on drugs, mass incarceration, and the disparities of resources within our society. You know, Aurora has the potential to be recognized as an innovative city for criminal justice reform, just as it has for its urban pack. Please listen to our concerns with the civilian review board and vote no to the current proposal. You know, the individual of Aurora Group, Aurora Rapid Response Team, the People Coalition, all have retiree lists to highlight issues that we see within the Aurora Police Department. And we have some recommendations that can improve the relationships with our city public safety department. We want to make Aurora better for every resident, especially those with so many resources. Thank you for your time.
Clerk, can you call the next speaker?
Arjun Nair.
Say that one more time.
Arjun Nair.
Arjun Nair. Arjun Nair, can you hear my voice? Arjun? Is Arjun on, Mr. Anderson?
Can you hear me? Can you hear me? This is Arjun. Can you hear me?
You have, you have three minutes beginning now.
All right. My name is Arjuna Snire. I'm a resident of the tenth ward. And I'd like, and I, first of all, I'd like to say that I respect that we are even having a discussion of a civilian review board. I know, I know many police, many police departments, many city councils aren't willing to even have the discussion. But I think that at least where it stands right now, it's a little, it's a little bit, it's a little bit of a toothless board right now. The board, this board should serve to be holding the police accountable. And now, when I look and see that the, they will try, help work with APD to help with the POC, with the recruitment of people of color, I think Indian man, I can understand that. But this job of the CRB is to be holding them accountable, not serve, not serve as their marketing department for POC, for POC outreach. As I'm, Cornell, Cornell, furthermore, even if with diversity on the board or in the Paris Police Department, Cornell West once said that, well, black faces in higher places don't always actually help the people. We have to look and see who's actually going to work and serve the purpose of the, serve the purpose of the civilian review board. Furthermore, I heard earlier was remarked that the reason for not having incarcerated people on the board is that it's for some allegation of bias. Well, everybody, everybody has their biases, incarcerated, and nobody. Yeah, sure. And it's a, it's an unfair, it's an unfair burden to exclude. It's, I believe that it is an unfair burden. burden to exclude them from the board. Thank you, thank you for your time. I hope you're all staying safe and healthy during this and I hope you have a happy Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Clerk, can you call the next speaker?
Andrew Tripp.
Andrew Tripp, can you hear my voice?
Yes, sir.
All right, you have three minutes beginning now.
Thank you. Well, I am speaking here on behalf of a bunch of frustrated um citizens, frustrated in the fact of politics and the, the way that politics plays a role in humanity. Um, I heard a bunch of comments earlier from the people that designed this board. It sounded like patting themselves on the back, being so proud of something that they thought was achievable. Well, when you aim for low bars, you can definitely achieve it. This is not nearly enough, and it it's, it's a true shame if this goes forward today. You guys need to delay this and and wait till there is something that makes more sense for the community. You need to go back to the drawing board and and rehash this because what you have going on right now, it's, you're losing an opportunity to gain trust with the community is what you're doing, and there is no trust. The trust has been dissolved, and by giving the board no power, then you're not going to gain the trust from the community. If you want to actually gain trust of the community, then you need to trust the community. Let the community please the police. There's, it makes no sense that the citizens of Aurora have to pay for the lawsuits when they're brought against the Aurora PD. However, we get zero say whether somebody loses their job or not because they're protected by their union. It makes absolutely no sense. I don't know why you guys aren't looking at places, you say we're cutting edge, but we're not. You look at a place like Wilmington, Delaware, where they, their board that they they have set up, it's five people appointed by civil rights groups. That's what this board is about. It's about the rights of civilians. So why are we not having people that are representing, representing the rights of civilians, being the ones that are appointed? Having somebody represented by civil rights groups rather than the mayor or at least a conglomeration of, so the mayor could appoint one, city council members, whatever it may be, but you need to have the civil rights groups in there. Also, the consistency of it shouldn't be one person from this ward, one person from that ward. The police is that are more heavily pleased should have more representation because it's about their rights. You are not going to gain the trust of the people if you give them a rubber stamp, and you're going to give the police more ways to point fingers about why they didn't do anything wrong, and they're going to be able to blame things on other people. It's time for us to actually make change instead of talking about it. You can talk about it, you can make different tools and make it look like we're making change, but really all we're doing is putting paint on an old beat up car. We need to make real change, and I implore you guys to actually look at this, sit down, delay this, let's look at it again. We, it needs to have teeth, they need to have more power and able to do things versus just giving recommendations. And that's, that's pretty much where I'm at. I'm, I'm at a loss that you guys.
Hey, your time, your time is up. Clerk, can you call the next speaker?
Randy Ryder.
Mr. Ryder, can you hear my voice?
Yes, I can.
All right, you, you have three minutes beginning now.
Well, I'm not going to use my whole three minutes because basically everything that needs to be said has been said. Um, there's binding resolutions. Um, it, it, the civilian review board, if it doesn't have that, it's just another rubber, rubber stamp committee, and nobody in the community is going to have confidence in a board appointed by the status quo. The people responsible for the problem are going to be the ones who point the board. It makes no sense at all. So my, my thing is this, we can keep dancing around the issue, but the issue is accountability. And with anything without binding resolutions that will allow the civilian uh uh board to implement and or decide uh punishment won't be accepted by the community. Uh, you guys can force through this and pat yourself on the back by saying that you you've done something. It really, you know, this is just another, such another way to deny the people a voice. And, and, you know, it really, you know, it's disgusting the way we want to try and play with smoke and mirrors when everybody can see right through it. You know, it's not because you don't have any accountability. Recruitment means nothing if you don't have accountability. So I'm trying, and, and, and furthermore, we also, as a community, should also be on, in, in the room with the disciplinary procedures being talked about in the union contracts. We're subject to those, we, we have, uh, we're subject to those, those, those findings and those initiatives, but yet we have no say in it. We, and a lot of times we have no idea what they are. We don't have any, that's where your problem is, is the union contract, but the citizens don't have any say. And well, and, and I'll use the rest of my time.
Clerk, can you call the next speaker?
Jonathan Burning.
Mr. Burning, can you hear my voice?
Yes, sir.
All right, you have three minutes beginning now.
Good evening, Mayor Irvin and members of the city council. Since 1986, my family has owned and operated Happiness's Pets. All of the puppies we offer at our stores come with a 30 day health guarantee that includes free veterinary care if necessary, as well as a four year warranty for life threatening congenital defects. We are also proud to maintain an A plus rating with the Better Business Bureau. We have our own networks of breeders, and all who have five or more female breeding dogs are accredited by the Canine Care Certification Program operated by Purdue University's College of Veterinary Medicine. These comprehensive standards address both the physical and behavioral needs of breeding dogs and their puppies, and are the most rigorous standards in the entire country. Standards cover areas such as primary enclosure size, where it doubles the square footage of the current federal size, unfettered access to outdoor runs, daily exercise requirements, strict litter limit for female dogs, and mandatory retirement age for all breeding dogs. Canine care breeders are inspected and audited by an independent third party, which is also the largest ISO 9001 certified animal welfare certification company in the entire country. These breeders define what a responsible breeder is, and I invite every member of this council to visit some of our breeders and see the care, compassion, and humane treatment that they show their dogs. It is attainable to promote real change through having licensed breeders meet public expectations for ethical practices and higher standards of dog welfare. In fact, a recent survey conducted by Purdue University showed that 90% of the respondents believe dogs can be bred ethically and responsibly. I look forward to offering facts to this committee and be a resource as you look into this very important matter. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Clerk, can you call the next speaker?
Louis Valencia Mendoza.
Louis Valencia Mendoza? Louis Valencia Mendoza, can you hear my voice? You might be on mute, you might want to try pressing star six to take yourself off mute. Is Mr. Mendoza on, Jeff, with us? Mr. Anderson? We can't hear you either, Mr. Anderson. Madam Clerk, we'll put him at the end, and would you call the next speaker?
Luma Webster.
Luma Webster, can you hear my voice?
Hello?
Yes, uh, Luma, you have, Ms. Webster, you have three minutes beginning now.
Hello, um, good evening, council members. Um, I would like to request that the proposal for an ordinance creating a civilian review board be removed from the consent agenda and delayed for further discussion. Uh, for the council consideration and to voice my opinion as an Aurora resident, I want to express my dissatisfaction with the current civilian review board proposal. Um, I want to examine a couple aspects that are not aligned with the community's request. Uh, some of these requests specifically were made at community listening session. Uh, first is the proposal as a whole misses key points that makes a board effective in addressing civilian complaints of police violence, police aggression, and police accountability towards communities of color. Um, this request for a civilian review board was made back in the summer, um, which is the impetus for the change initiative. Um, however, I think we're forgetting the reason why uh this was made. I think we're forgetting the unrest that happened uh in May, we're forgetting the national outcry that is happening, um, and it's all due to police brutality and police violence. Um, part of what I do as a volunteer um is listening to community members and try to do my best to help them out. I have listened to countless stories from Aurora citizens, Aurora residents of police brutality coming from APD, and we had um a slight amount of hope that the change initiative proposal would do something um about these uh complaints of these police brutality issues and bring some healing, especially to communities of color, especially to our black community or Latino community. Um, however, it doesn't seem that this proposal actually stands on any of these items. Um, first of all, the review board should be independent of the city and Aurora Police Department. It should have binding authority, and its membership should be reflected of those residents who are most impacted. Uh, we mentioned formerly incarcerated, we mentioned criminal law attorneys. Um, you've heard this from other members as well, speakers who have spoken before me. Um, and I know that earlier during the presentation, the council learned of the reasons why this was not um a part of the proposal, however, we urge you that you reconsider. Um, mostly, I just want to say that I'm thankful that the council um and the aldermen were able to bring forth some of the requests that were emailed to them this morning, um, and that they brought this to consideration uh to the council and to the membership viewing as a whole, to the residents that are listening. Um, however, there's still work to be done, and I hope that the, the council and the mayor will continue to listen.
Clerk, can you call the next speaker?
Mr. Mayor, if Ms. Valencia Mendoza is not on the call, then we have no additional speakers.
Thank you very much. That concludes our public comment portion. We'll now move on to the next section of the agenda. Um, next, we will hear both the consent agenda and the direct to council agenda together in full. Um, will the clerk now please read both agendas in full?
And Mr. Mayor, can I just confirm that the agendas are showing on the screen?
It is.
Thank you very much. Twenty dash zero two seven five, an ordinance establishing a special use plan development approving the Fox Valley SPLLC plan description and amending ordinance number three one zero zero being the Aurora zoning ordinance and the zoning map attached thereto to an underlying zoning of R dash five A mid-rise multiple family dwelling district for the property located on the east side of the Fox Valley Mall, west of Route 59 and south of New York Street. Twenty dash zero two seven six, a resolution approving a preliminary plan on Lot Two of the first re subdivision of Fox Valley East Region One Unit Number One, located on the east side of the Fox Valley Mall, west of Route 59 and south of New York Street. Twenty dash zero five two nine, a resolution authorizing the amendment of the contract with Microsoft Incorporated awarded in 2018 through the State of Illinois Central Management Services bid awarded to CDW Incorporated in 2015 to allow for the purchase of Microsoft Enterprise M365 security and mobility licenses through Dell Incorporated, One Dell Way Round Rock, Texas, seven eight six six four, in the amount of $20,511.84, also through the State of Illinois Central Management Services bid awarded in 2020. Twenty dash zero five six three, a resolution to award a contract to HR Green Incorporated in the amount of $39,750 to revise the regulatory floodplain map for the area surrounding Mastodon Lake. Twenty dash zero five six four, a resolution to award a contract to HR Green Incorporated in the amount of $176,350 for final engineering and construction observation for the Mastodon Lake dredging and shoreline restoration project. Twenty dash zero six zero zero, a resolution approving, approving Adeline Midwest LLC, Echo Clean Maintenance Incorporated, International Cleaning Services Incorporated, Smith Maintenance Company, and Total Facilities Maintenance Incorporated as the lowest responsive responsible bidders for contracted janitorial services at various city of Aurora facilities effective January 1st, 2021, in an amount not to exceed $114,161.59. Twenty dash zero six zero five, an ordinance establishing a special use plan development at three one one South Evanslon Avenue to be incorporated under the existing 2018 Aurora University Plan Description. Twenty dash zero six five one, an ordinance granting a special use permit for social service agencies, charitable organizations, health related facilities, and similar uses when not operated for coronary profit, six six three zero use on the property located at five four five 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 one and five five seven South Fourth Street. Twenty dash zero six six three, a resolution to approve Petroleum Traders Incorporated and Blue Petroleum LLC as the vendors for the purchase of unleaded and diesel motor fuel for the city of Aurora fleet and backup generators for an additional one year in an amount not to exceed one, I'm not, $1,153,500, apologize. Twenty dash zero six seven one, a resolution accepting the underground public improvements and maintenance security for Butterfield Phase Two, Unit 4B, Lot 401, 2350, Frieder Lane. Twenty dash zero six eight one, a resolution authorizing the lease of city owned property with Marie Wilkinson Food Pantry Incorporated for the continuation of their community garden. Twenty dash zero seven zero eight, a resolution authorizing the appropriation and expenditure of motor fuel tax funds for snow removal operations in 2021 in an amount up to $1,320,000. Twenty dash zero seven one zero, an ordinance creating a civilian review board to review matters involving the police department. Twenty dash zero seven two three, a resolution renewing all fees pertaining to Chapter 46 of the City of Aurora Code of Ordinances entitled towing services. Twenty dash zero seven three three, a resolution authorizing annual action plan substantial amendment 2020 number three to modify Project CB, CDVG 2020 dash ten dash six oh five district to convert the activity from an economic development activity to a public service activity focusing on youth education in response to the coronavirus pandemic. Twenty dash zero seven three six, a resolution establishing the maximum number of Class A package sales full liquor licenses unofficially related to the application from Prisco's Fine Foods Incorporated, doing business as Prisco's Family Market, located at 1108 Prairie Street, Aurora, Illinois, six oh five oh six. Twenty dash zero seven four two, resolution allowing the director of purchasing to approve change order one for $100,000 to the contract of $802,630 with Geneva Construction Company, P.O Box 998, Aurora, Illinois, six oh five oh seven dash zero nine nine eight, for the 2020 citywide pavement patching for water and sewer maintenance project. Twenty dash zero two two three, a resolution accepting the dedication of an easement at 2,000 Liberty Street. Twenty dash zero two two four, a resolution accepting the dedication of an easement at 1952 Liberty Street. Twenty dash zero two two five, a resolution accepting the dedication of an easement at 1948 Liberty Street. Twenty dash zero two eight one, a resolution accepting the dedication of an easement at 2170 East New York Street. Twenty dash zero seven six two, approval of the minutes of the Tuesday, November 10th, 2020 city council meeting.
Is there a motion to approve the items on both the direct council consent?
Somewhat.
Consent agenda moved by Alderman Garza?
Say it.
Second by Alderman Franco. Are there any uh motions before we entertain that motion second to approve? Are there any motions to remove any items from the consent agenda? Uh, Alderman Danelle, you are on mute.
Mayor, I would like us to uh pull uh the ordinance for creating a civilian review board uh and for further discussion.
Do we, do we need a second on that, council?
We would.
I'll second.
All right, there's a second, a motion by Alderman Danelle, second by Alderman Yamas. Do we need to, I assume, well, we're on zoom, we need a roll call.
No, not, not, not to remove, Mr. Mayor.
All right, so there's been a motion to second to remove, then it's been removed. So clerk, can you put that on unfinished business?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Other than that item that was removed by Alderman Danelle and Alderman Yamas, are there any other motions for items to be removed from the consent agenda? With no further motions, can you call the roll?
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Danelle?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Harburns?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bog?
Yes.
Alderman LaShay?
Yes.
Alderman Jenkins?
Yes.
Alderman O'Connor?
Yes.
Twelve As.
Motion carries consent agenda and direct to consent agenda are both approved, less the item that was removed and will be placed on unfinished business. Clerk, can you now read the first item under unfinished business?
Twenty dash zero seven two four, to authorize agreements with CY LLC, doing business as 180 Engineering Gov. Times USA LLC, Stiver Services LLC, and Nexus Employment Solution Plus Incorporated to provide staffing for temporary and contracted positions.
Somewhat.
There's been a motion by Alderman Garza, second by Alderman O'Connor, was it?
Yes.
Um, questions or discussion? Questions or discussion? Alderman Yamas?
I guess I should explain why this is an unfinished, um, it was
I guess I should explain why this is an unfinished. It was originally going to be on consent, but I requested take it off just because I'm opposed to the idea of using temp agencies to fill city positions here for permanent positions that could go to Aurora residents. So, that's the reason I'll be voting no.
And, Alderman, before we go on and take the vote, Alderman Yamas, you explain that the reason that we're doing the temp and contract positions because of our budget constraints and we're having a freeze on our, uh, freeze on hiring, but that does not prevent anyone in those positions from being local?
I, I do understand that, and I, I know it's because of our budget considerations and I, I understand the circumstances. I'm just, I guess morally opposed to using temp agencies to, to fill a need for labor, whether it be at the city or anywhere else.
And you said labor, and just to make it clear, this, these are not going to be labor or union positions because those are governed by their individual contracts. Alderman?
I meant labor as in all of us.
Okay, gotcha.
As workers.
All right, Alderman O'Connor?
I think it should be made clear that in the past, very often, we have been able to use temps to fill a position in the meantime before the permanent position comes in. Uh, now, again, maybe affected by the hiring freeze at this point, but we're going to have to have some assumption that that's not going to go on forever. Hopefully, please, that we don't have that problem. But it isn't a case of as soon as a permanent position is open that we slot in somebody temporary to continue the work. I think it, it has happened quite often in the alderman's office where we've had a change in, in, uh, in positions there or employment, uh, that, that we need somebody in the meantime in order to cover the work. And so I, I want to make it clear that I don't think this is just a, a, a philosophy that we're not going to have people in full-time positions. Uh, this is the stopgap, uh, in order to, to cover the work while we continue the search for people that will take that job.
And, and to add to that, Alderman O'Connor, that is very, it could be possible that that individual that was in that temp or contracted position, once we level out and our, our finances become stable and we get a hold on our budget, that those individuals who could very well be citizens of Aurora, residents of Aurora, could then become full-time with the City of Aurora. Uh, Alderman Seville?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. And, and adding to Alderman O'Connor and what he said, uh, that's very true that we have had, okay, on occasion to hire temp services in the alderman's office, and they went on to work full-time for us. Uh, they were very qualified and, and we had a need for it, uh, when we went through the budgetary constraints at the time, um, and the personnel constraints at the time, we had, like I say, we eventually hired them. So, it was a very good opportunity for us as well. And then?
Thank you. Alderman Hartburns?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We've used temp many times. Unfortunately, that's why we're fighting so hard to make sure we keep five girls in the office. When they have vacation, when they're sick, we need somebody to fill in. So regardless to, um, how many employees you may have in a department, there will come a time where you will need help. Somebody needs to step in because if one of the girls is sick or whomever is ill, we can't control that. Someone has to come into our office to make things work. Somebody has to come into the office to make things work. Unfortunately, I got noise in my background, I'm upset by this. Anyway, uh, we have to make things work in the office. So, all our departments, we do have a time where we need someone to come in as a temp to work for us. It is what it is, but we can't change that. Whoever may be ill, whatever the case may be, it is what it is. You will need a temp to fill that position. Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Any other comments? Questions? All right, clerk, will you please call the roll? There's been a motion, a second. Call the roll.
Alderman Yamas?
No.
Alderman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Matiakos?
Yes.
Alderman Denell?
You're on mute, Alderman Denell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Hartburns?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bog?
Yes.
Alderman Lache?
Yes.
Alderman Jenkins?
Yes.
Alderman O'Connor?
Yes.
Eleven As, one Nay.
Motion carries, item is approved. Let's go to the next item under new fish, under unfinished business.
Twenty dash zero seven one zero, an ordinance creating a civilian review board to review matters involving the police department.
You have a motion, um, I'm sorry, motion by Alderman Frank, I'm sorry, our motion by Alderman Franco, is there a second?
Second.
All right, second by Alderman Garza. I saw hands. I didn't know if you guys were asking questions or looking at motion seconds. So, motion by Alderman Garza, second, Alderman Franco, second by Alderman Garza. Questions, Alderman Denell?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, I appreciate taking this off a consent so we can have a little more discussion. Um, we've heard a lot of passionate, um, opinions this evening, but I also know that we spent quite a bit of time working on this ordinance and, and, and I'm not sure putting this off is going to help because it seems like, uh, there are kind of two different kind of approaches to this. And I would ask, what communities did we look at? I know we modeled this after other communities. Uh, what other communities, uh, did, did we model ordinance after and, and how is their success?
Mr. Alexandra or, um, Mr. Muhammad?
Good. Uh, Clayton can jump on too, but, uh, we looked at some, and I think Clayton, you have the list, but I know we, uh, looked at Evanston, we looked at Oak Park, we looked at, uh, information from, uh, the Nicola Group, the National Organization. Uh, Clayton, you have the list handy?
I will. I'll pull it up one second here. Again, Nicole, uh, I'm going to pull the slide up here. These are some of the, hold on one second. These are some of the cities in addition to the locals that, uh, Mr. Alexandria just shared. This is just one of the slides that we presented earlier. We look at some of the CRBs, pardon me, from the Nicole Group, the National Association of, of Civilian Oversight of Law Enforcement. These are some of their benchmarking cities from Albany to San Francisco. And as we shared, uh, in the presentations, you know, throughout the months there, you know, they really range from A to Z. They range from A to Z on how they operate, how they, uh, you know, their process inside their municipalities. So, we use them as a benchmark, um, for a starting point, um, and then began to dive in deeper than overlated in the City of Aurora and, uh, again, having the voices of, uh, you know, aldermen and community folks like Judge Kim Bright, you know, kind of weigh in and push back. What you see certainly was not the first rendition or the second or probably the third. Uh, it certainly was a lot of back and forth, uh, to get to that, the ordinance piece. So, these are some of the cities. Again, previous presentation, I'm just re-pulling up again.
Thank you, sir.
And, and if I can add, Mayor, um, to Alderman Denell and others, I, I think, um, we've seen and heard tonight that there is some misinformation, uh, and an opportunity here. And I think the opportunity is for us to fully engage and continue to engage our community and educate them on the nuances and the differences of what's being proposed and what I think some folks have as a different notion of what this should be. And we looked at all of that in our discussions, and we also have to remember that there are state laws that we don't have control over, that we have to abide by. Uh, there's also a collective bargaining agreement with our union. So, when it comes to discipline, that's a bargainable, um, uh, section in that contract that we cannot unilaterally change by all of a sudden, even though we're home rule, we cannot simply decree an independent board that now is going to have all of these powers and abilities. Um, I believe somebody, uh, also, uh, you know, we are but a part of a larger judicial system. And again, we can only control our local government and our local officials. We cannot go beyond into county officials or others, even if we pass an ordinance. We don't have that kind of power. So, in some of these states, they have different setups, different state laws than Illinois does. So, at its core, we try to address what can we legitimately legally get done to set a course to insert this civilian review board into our current processes. And then perhaps, uh, down the line, we can talk to our state reps and state senators and see about some of the state law changes. But it's, it's a reality check for us, having gone through this process, to see what's possible and what's achievable. And again, you can bring up, um, a lot of these other independent boards, but we have to operate within the law, within the collective bargaining agreement, within the city's management rights, and this is the outcome, uh, as we've presented it. And, and we believe very strongly, this setup has been successful in other places, and the transparency of what we have proposed, we've already put out there a website, a, a database, I'm sorry, that puts out discipline and it's being updated and it's continually being added to. The same will come about with the CRB website transparency. So, this is not going to be, we intentionally did not set it up to be a rubber stamp or just some sort of figurehead commission. Again, we are giving this all the power and authority we can under the current state law and within the parameters of our local ordinances and collective bargaining agreement.
And Alderman Denell, again, we really went through the seven meeting process so that we could be as transparent as possible so that we didn't get to this point, um, uh, and have these, these questions so we can address them along the way.
Alderman O'Connor, Joe, question?
No, I didn't. Not at this point.
All right, Alderman Franco, then Alderman Bog?
Yeah, I just, you know, I, I think what Mr. Alexandria said is so important, and I think that sometimes people don't recognize that there are state laws, there are contracts that we have to abide by. You know, our, our hands are tied somewhat on what we can do outside of municipal, even though we're home rule, we still have laws and regulations we have to abide by. Um, but I just want people to know that, uh, you know, we just changed one of our commissions and boards. So, we felt that the planning commission and the zoning commission could be combined up. We do that. We audit. We take a look at what we're doing right and wrong and make things better. So, we're not reluctant to do that. And I think with the change initiative, I, I really do believe we've shown that we're willing to tackle the situation, and there's passionate opinions on both sides. Even tonight, two passionate people were talking. One didn't want somebody, a ex-police officer around, and one did. So, you know, this is a challenge we face because we're trying to listen to the people, but there's conflicting requests. And it's, and it's up to us to take this and make it as good as we can at any given time. And, and the other thing I wanted to say is too, is that, um, you know, when we go forward with something like this, sometimes these things take, uh, need a chance to evolve. Sometimes you do the best you can to get it right on day one, but if you don't, you have to be able to go back and say, wow, can we do this better? So, I think giving this an opportunity to work, I think, I think the staff and everybody has done a wonderful job of, of looking at what our communities do, listening, getting this together, getting the community involved. I think that we should move forward to this, and if there's a problem that comes up and we see it, I don't think we'd be reluctant to address it because we've shown that we will. So, I just think that this is the kind of thing we need to get done tonight. And then if there's anything we need to go, like, do later on to make it better, we certainly will because we've shown that we're willing to listen. So, I will be voting this to, on this tonight.
Alderman Bog?
Thank you. I, I have a question of clarification first and then a, a couple of questions. Um, on Exhibit A, page nine, said no person serving as an elected officer or city employee, the city shall serve on the board. Now, is that any elected officer? So, uh, for park district board, library board, or just city elected officers?
City elected officers.
Okay, thank you. Um, on page ten, um, again, on our requirements for the people who sit on the board, no person who is ineligible by federal or state law or rule to have access to law enforcement data required for use by the board shall serve on the board. There was some questions on, um, the true intent of this, and I think we started to talk about it a little bit. Um, Mr. Beanstrick, can you explain that in more detail?
Yes, Alderman. There may be times that in order for the CRB to do its job and to be able to take a look at the investigation that was conducted by the police department, they may need access to certain criminal justice information. That information is not necessarily controlled entirely by the City of Aurora or its police department, but by the state police or other agencies which have their own rules, uh, providing access to that information. So, to the extent that any of those rules would make, um, it, that information unavailable to one of the members, they would not be able to fully perform their duties as a member of the commission or board, excuse me.
Okay, and, and to follow up on that, um, in what ways do different incarcerated persons, how are they precluded by the state or federal board that you know of?
I, I, I can't speak to the specifics of the federal or state regulation. I can speak to the specifics of the ordinance as we've drafted it. There is no ban in our ordinance right now as to formerly incarcerated persons. The only, the only group of former offenders who would be excluded categorically from membership would be those who are convicted of forcible felonies, which is defined term of the Illinois Criminal Code. There is also a ten-year exclusion from those persons who were convicted of crimes involving dishonesty. Um, when you compare and contrast that requirement to the requirements of this, of, for example, the Civil Service Commission, which is responsible for hiring officers, the standard is actually a little bit lower. We are, uh, recognizing that people can and do change, and we are giving them as much of an opportunity to serve potentially as members of this panel as possible. So, that's why we don't have the same categorical exclusion that other boards and commissions that, um, also involve the police department would have.
Okay, thank you. And finally, um, Mr. Muhammad, you went through the list, and thank you for that. Uh, thank you for everyone for, uh, the hard work on this ordinance. Uh, we went to the list of cities that we looked at and kind of patterned this off of. Do any of those cities have it where, uh, the civilian review board, where their decision is binding, where it is not the final call of the police chief, but the actual review board has a binding, uh, binding power? Any ones that we looked at that have that? Yeah, again, they run A to Z, and I don't have the specific one, one or two, Alderman Bog, but they run A to Z. Some of those are oversight law enforcement bodies, um, that, you know, have that final decision as an oversight law enforcement body, uh, by their state statutes there.
Thank you. But as, but as Mr. Alexandria pointed out, our state statutes aren't drafted in the same way, and we don't have that authority on the, from the local perspective to impose those types of, uh, conditions in our ordinances. It will violate state law.
And it would violate our CBA because it would completely change the agreed-upon, uh, method of discipline, where the chief is the final arbiter for up-to-suspensions, and if the chief determines termination, it goes to our human resources director.
Questions? Sure, Mr. Alderman Jenkins?
Yes, uh, Mr. Mayor, I just want to, um, state that, yeah, looking at the cities that we did review, uh, we were able to pull some things, especially like, for example, Atlanta in terms of trying to work and educate the public in terms of how to, to interact and to deal, uh, with the police was very, uh, enlightening to me. And one of the things we wanted to make sure that we got into, to this ordinance, and there's, uh, other aspects to it that we, we incorporated it into it and tried to be able to make it something that, again, give more than just one set of eyes with regards to not having any kind of issues with, uh, with the Aurora Police Department. But one of the things, uh, things I want to stress to those listening to the, tonight, is that just because it doesn't go your way, don't sit back and say, well, I'm not going to get involved in that because it's a waste of my time. You, as a citizen, have the right to be involved, and if something occurs that's not, uh, in a manner that the civilian review board, it doesn't mean that you're just going to sit back and say, well, this is how it is and this is where we're going to go. You can be able to work, say, we've got to change this, and this was discussed, you know, with regards to staff in terms of us being a home rule, we can make changes to improve it. It's not perfect, but I encourage people to, to come forth, to be involved, to be, to work to be on the, on the civilian review board. Don't poo-poo it and say, oh, it's just a waste of time, because that's just like what people sit back and say, well, I'm not going to vote because it's a waste of time. But this last national election showed it wasn't a waste of time. And so, I really encourage people to really look at and come out and be involved. People of color, all people, come out and get involved, to be on this civilian review board. We all have to work together to make it better. No one here is saying it is perfect. Lord knows, I'm not saying it is perfect, but we did. Lord knows, I'm not saying it is perfect, but we did, we continue to work, and we need you to help us to continue to make it better. So, you know, I, I, I would be voting in favor of this, to move it forward, so that we can begin to put into place what the, the citizens had asked for. And is it perfect? We, no one tonight has said that. But we, we need to move this forward in order to make sure that we get to where we need to be, where all of our citizens can feel that they have a voice, and that there's someone else that's going to be looking at anything that occurs, and it not just one set of eyes, but there's more than, there's the other set of eyes that can make sure that things are done right.
Alderman Loftie?
Yeah. So, a couple of things. There was a comment tonight that there needs to be more oversight, like subpoena power and investigative power, but I'm looking at the, the memo, and it does say that the civilian review board will be able to review all the evidence. So I would hope, and I don't know if Rick or the police could tell me, but I would hope that anything that's been, any evidence would be, be able to be reviewed by the civilian review board. That's number one. Two, I would, I would have preferred to have the presentations which were terrific tonight by Clayton and Alex Alendreu to be posted, so we could all read them. And I think the public could read them. You know, the public needs to know, they can go on the city website, and these documents that the aldermen read are posted. Because I would have liked to see in the ordinances from those other cities like Atlanta. Earlier, I don't know, a month or two ago, we had other ordinances posted, but they're not reposted tonight. So I would have liked to see those. I do think that having one person appoint all the nine members is not a good idea. I prefer to have the Public Health, Safety and Transportation Committee, or the RAP Committee, appoint, appoint the, the nine members of the civilian review board. I think that would be better. Or as I said earlier, other ordinances I read had like the head of the Hispanic Heritage Advisory and the African American Advisory Committee, things like that. But tonight, we're faced with a choice. Do we push it back, or do we move it ahead? And it doesn't seem like there's enough other alderman support to push it back. So I will see how, does anyone else want to push it back or not? That's my question to anybody else.
Alderman Franco?
Yeah, I just want to make a clarification. And I, I think, Mr. Alexander, correct me if I'm wrong, but when I asked about who's going to be bringing this person forward, you said the staff and the mayor's office will come up with the names that will come to the RAP Committee and then go to COW. So there's going to be a process along the way where we'll be able to review these people. It's not going to be the mayor saying this is where we're going, because, because we're going to go through the normal chain, which would be coming to the committees after the decision's made on the offense.
And each of those chains are public meetings, allowing public comment. And just like our other very critical boards and commissions, the mayor is nominating, but the board, it's with the board's advice and consent. So you have significant input, as you always do, with all of these other boards and commissions, and that is not changing here.
Hold on one second. Hold on one second. In this particular case, there's an additional step. It's going to start the RAP Committee before it goes to COW and City Council. So there'll, there'll be another layer of checks and balances.
Check that additional layer, Mayor. Unlike the other boards, will be a public list of applicants that the public will see, and you will see before it even comes to the final list before wrap. That doesn't happen in other boards or commissions.
Well, the RAP Committee is going to make the recommendation to the mayor to appoint the nine people? Is that what, no?
It goes through the process, RAP, COW, and final council, like all of our committees there. And so when the mayor makes the final recommendations at first, Alderman Loftie goes to the RAP Committee as all other appointments do.
Okay.
Prior to that, we will publicly list the names of appointees and finalists. Again, that can happen in the process of any other board.
Mr. Alexandria, you're going to just ask Mr. Beanstrick to do something?
Yes, sir. I think he's going to respond to Alderman Loftie's other points.
Yeah, Alderman Loftie had asked about the availability of records and being able to review the materials. The intent and the wording of the ordinance is specifically designed so that the CRB has the opportunity to review everything that the police department's Office of Professional Standards reviewed in the course of its investigation and its ultimate recommendation for discipline. That's also where the CRB comes in and being able to make additional recommendations to go back and dig a little bit deeper if it felt that something wasn't done adequately, or if there are other stones that needed to be overturned. So as to the ability to have access to all the information the police department had, it will have that, and it will also further have the ability to go back and make the recommendation that further investigation is warranted before disciplinary decision is made.
Right, thank you.
Any other questions? Come on, Alderman Yamas?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We mentioned that the, the list of applicants would be available to the public, except for all applicants, or only those that made a certain stage in the process?
No, sir, Alderman Yamas, I apologize. We're going to publish all applicants first at December 8th, which is the first week, and then again, at December 22nd after the close. So we'll see two different rounds, but they'll all be, anybody who applied on the website will be published.
And I don't think this is built in yet to the ordinance, but could we, it doesn't have to be amended to include it, but could we somehow give access to the alderman to have access to the applications that are submitted to the mayor's office, so we can see? Because by the time it comes to the RAP Committee, we'll see who the, the mayor's recommendations are as far as appointed members, but we won't see the materials for those that weren't selected.
So like the whole application you're asking, looking for, okay?
Right. What, whatever materials are included in, in the application. And then to Alderman Loftie's point from earlier, his question, asking whether he has support from any other aldermen to, to hold this item. I, I would be open to it if we had a reason to do it. I just don't want this to be a situation like it was a few months back with, with the riot gear, where we sent it back to finance, and it just, it delayed things a couple of months, and nothing changed, nothing happened. There was no real reason to initially even send it back. So if we have a reason to, I, I would, you know, vote for that. But otherwise, just to send it back for the sake of sending it back, I wouldn't agree to do that. I think the majority of the points that were raised by the public were answered. And mostly the answers are that we legally cannot do it. This, we, the, the public or certain members of the public are asking for a level of independence that we legally cannot give the board. They are not going to be a separate governmental body, a separate taxing body. They are a board that's under the authority of the mayor and the city, just like any other board here. And I, I don't know if we can legally do anything differently, but maybe Corporation Council or Beanstrick could chime in for that.
Alderman, our, our ability to do things is limited to the government and affairs of the city. If we were to spin something like that off, it would be outside of our home rule authority, absent, absent specific statutory authority to do it.
All right, thank you.
Alderman Loftie?
Mayor, my apologies, but can we speak first? Everybody had one opportunity to speak before. Alderman have a, a second and third and fourth opportunity. Do you mind if I interject with that thought?
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Mayor, thank you so much. You know, I, I'd like to, first of all, say thank you to Alderman Jenkins and the Chief of Police, who took the time to pick up my phone call and answer every single little question, tiny, and, and provide me with anything, any, any insight they had already in regards to a CRB and, and everything above and ancillary to it. When, after, before we had that last minute scheduled meeting, requested by Chairman Alderwoman Hartburns, a meeting that I knew would affect, a last minute meeting would affect even my own family, and I knew they'd be perturbed. And I sunk, I sunk myself into my office for two days, and I, I took the Clayton challenge. I knew that was coming with a simple click of a website for the Nicole Group, which gives you a plethora of information. And I took that challenge, and I saw it as my duty to research other communities as they were presented by staff, and to also fi- figure out what is going on in the community around us and in the country. And one thing I noticed very quickly is one size does not fit all. You know, Mr. Alexandria said something very important. One of the first, one of the first things he said this evening, when he was starting talking about, on the presentation for the change initiative and CRB, is instilling community confidence in our police department. And if he'll allow me, I'd like to add a word to that. And it's, I, I would like to say that it's installing additional community confidence in a very strong and very professional police department that we have here in the city. You know, we're, we're up, you know, we're, we're 12 aldermen, and there's no way, I realized that weekend, that we're going to find a consensus that this is the ideal CRB for the city. And we have to come to a consensus of what would be a good first step. And I think we found that here today. You know, and when you're looking at this, this CRB, we're giving the residents of, an opportunity to look into the APD and how it functions, even a stronger look than probably aldermen have right now themselves. It's really hard to think that we'll be, we'll be, you know, for those who will be asked and accepting to serve, will turn a blind eye and not speak up when injustice presents itself. The way, even the way the CRB is presented today for, before us, and what their duties are. I think it would be impossible, impossible for all of us to determine something that, that covers every single viewpoint. But again, I think Mr. Alexandria hit it right on the nose, again, and I think it is a positive first step that, and it reminds us that can be retooled as a community. And with those things in mind, I think we need to move forward. I think enough has been said. Forgive me for saying that, too. We've been talking about this for a long time, Mr. Mayor. And I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Been a motion made to approve, Alderman Messiakos, second by Alderman Smith. Clerk, call the roll.
Alderman Yamas?
Pass.
Alderman Garza?
Uh, yes.
Alderman Messiakos?
Yes.
Alderman Donnell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Hartburns?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Buck?
Yes.
Alderman Loftie?
Yes.
Alderman Jenkins?
Yes.
Alderman O'Connor?
Yes.
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
12 As.
All right. Motion carries. That item is approved. All right, that completes unfinished business. Can we go on to new business? Clerk, read the first item on our new business.
Twenty dash zero seven eight one, a resolution authorizing and directing the Rules, Administration and Procedures Committee to investigate and make recommendations as to the need for the regulation of the sale of pets at retail locations within the city.
Samut.
There's been a motion to accept by Alderman Garza.
Second.
Second by Alderman Franco. Questions or discussion on that resolution? Questions or discussion on the resolution?
Make a presentation.
Hold on a second, hold on a second, hold on a second. Alderman Seville?
Yes, I'm just wondering if staff could give us a short presentation on this.
Correct. Who from state, is this a presentation issue? It's just a, there's nothing to present? Alderman Beanstrick, go ahead. I mean, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Council Beanstrick, go ahead.
Not a problem, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, this, this matter came to the city council's attention over the last couple weeks regarding whether or not it would be appropriate to adopt various regulations pertaining to the sale of pets within the city of Aurora. This is obviously an issue that is important and close to many of us, and we wanted to make sure that before the city council took any action on this, I had the opportunity to fully vet the issue, no pun intended there, and determined that this was the direction that the city council wanted to go. So in reviewing this with the mayor's office, our recommendation was to task, task the RAP Committee over the course of the next several weeks to investigate the issue for, fully to determine whether and what types of regulations may be necessary, if any, and to come back to the city council with a recommendation for those measures going forward.
Questions based on what council just stated? Questions? There are no questions. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Messiakos?
Yes.
Alderman Donnell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Hartburns?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Buck?
Yes.
And Loftie?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
Alderman O'Connor?
Yes.
12 As.
Motion carries. Resolution is approved. That concludes new business. Let's go to reports. I believe Mr. Lyons has a report under Treasurer's Report. Is that correct, Mr. Lyons? Mr. Lot?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
All right, there you go. All right. Well, then, take it away, sir.
I am going to share a screen, I hope. And we have the COVID-19, November 24th report up for all to see?
Yes, sir.
Yes. Again, this report maintains its same process, especially, I'm glad to say that, given the hour. Just as a update to everything that we are doing, we have received a 2.5 million grant from DuPage. We, I'm going to skip the next line. We have received the 480,000 from Will. We have received the 250,000 from Kendall through the state. We have also received one, $1 million for a Hessen house from DuPage County. And tomorrow, we will go pick up the 7.7 million dollar check from Kane County. The, if you look at the Treasurer's Report, the, we do have all of our revenues for the general fund. Sales tax, again, showed great resilience. Remember, this is for taxes in July, received in October. So the, we're at 3%. We do see this going down a little bit when we look at November, being closed in a little bit more. But it, it was at about 15% down. So not the precipitous drop that I did project going into COVID. We know a lot more, so we are not projecting a precipitous drop, but it will have an impact, impact on our revenues. The income tax is right at budget. So remember, that's last year's income tax paid this year. Property tax receipts, we don't get much after September, so we have gotten nearly all of our property taxes in as well. The, per the report, we're in good shape compared to last year. Cash balance is at 8 million, which is higher than last year, and I've got a couple of graphics that show this. But we are still looking at a deficit for the whole year for 2020. So again, where were we back in April? Where are we right now? So we've hovered due to our efforts at being 9 million to 8 million dollars better in cash balance than last year for five months. Six months, I can count, I am your treasurer, six months according to the, the graphic. And that's important, but we will see that both the cash and fund drop off at the end of November and December. And that's because property taxes are all in, but our expenditures keep going. So that's, that won't be a surprise. That's not a COVID issue, but we are positioned favorably to end the year in the black and in a stable position for next year. Again, that's as strong as I'll get, is stable. Positive indicators that, that the sales tax are better than expected. Property taxes came in, building permits came in better than expected. And when I say expected, that is according to original projections, not better than the 2020 budget expected. The expense is staying below budget, but increasing. We're at seven to eight percent below budget on The uh expenses staying below budget but increasing, we're at seven to eight percent below budget on expenses. Uh, the governor's ordered uh to uh be at phase three. We don't know how long that will go. Um, our August expenses were back at a higher level, closer to what we would normally anticipate. And um reopening is not held, so our revenues uh most likely will decrease as previously uh discussed, so we will need to proceed with caution. Continuing that slide, we're still at this high level. Thirteen percent was where we were on the date. It's gone up above that. It's come back down. Each day is a little bit different. December expenses can be high because we do end up with a lot of overtime around the holidays. If uh uh phase three continues into next year, that will have an impact on the twenty twenty one budget. But we're not, uh, we met today and financed to finish the budget off. There is no reason yet to say we should um scrap the proposed budget as the finance committee has reviewed. Um, that's our best estimate and we will monitor our performance in the first quarter and second quarter of uh twenty twenty one to see if we need to make any adjustments to the budget. So uh, again, uh, we will continue to seek grants. Uh, some of the specific grants were reopened, meaning uh uh not a a general careers grant, but we can and are applying for any follow-up grants related to business activities uh or any other specific grant um at the counties. We, again, uh, there's no reason that we're going to have to uh issue any line of credit this year or refinance the December one um uh debt payment for this year. That is something we have proposed in next year's budget. But only a portion of that debt are we looking to refinance. Uh, we are going to hold off on the decision packages for the remainder of the year. And we continue to look at uh all of our capital projects, but as you will see in the next two months, uh, Kent Growth and Company will begin the process uh once we get a budget passed of moving forward with bids to get uh back into the swing of getting some of our capital done. That's it, and I will uh uh hold for any questions uh regarding that report or the actual treasurer's report in your packet.
Questions from the alderman, Alderman O'Connor.
Not a question, just a compliment to Mr. Lyons and the finance department and to the administration for just unbelievably good work through a very difficult year. Uh, I think the city of Aurora has always been extremely well-run in regard to uh our expenses and and how we do this. Multiple challenges because of this year, but I think, first of all, the the constant reporting makes us uh obviously much more informed for the citizenry. Just excellent work on everybody's behalf in regard to this. So I know I know the door isn't closed yet because Mr. Lyons keeps using that word deficit near the end of the year, but uh I think the work done in in loss of revenue and the reduction of expenses to try to to keep us balanced uh has been excellent and thank you very much for that.
Thanks, sir. Did I see your hand up, Alderman Denell? Alderman Jenkins?
Yes, I want to concur with uh Alderman O'Connor uh with regards to staff and and uh what they have been doing in terms of trying to work to get us through this. Uh, this is uh to to be in the position that we are in is because we have not been you know, spending like drunken sailors uh or anything of that nature. Uh, our our staff uh and really looking at long term in terms of where we can be. We have to give kudos to them uh and uh and kudos to ourselves in terms of looking at what we need to do to maneuver ourselves through this. And also looking ahead uh because we're not sure on what twenty twenty one is going to bring us. But uh, so far, so good. And I I gotta again commend uh Mr. Lyons and staff for for doing a yeoman's job to get us uh through this point.
Any other comments, questions? Me, Alden? All right, well, thank you very much for that report, Mr. Lyons. Appreciate it. We'll go on to the next portion of our bills. Is there a motion approved and pay the bills? Motion made by Alderman Garza, seconded by Alderman Franco. By hand, a motion. Uh, are there any other questions or discussions on the bill? No questions. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Alderman Yamas.
Yes.
Alderman Garza.
Yes.
Alderman Messiakos.
Yes.
Alderman Denell.
Yes.
Alderman Franco.
Yes.
Alderman Seville.
Yes.
Alderman Hartburns.
Yes.
Alderman Smith.
Yes.
Alderman Buck.
Yes.
Loft.
Yes.
Alderman Jenkins.
Yes.
Alderman O'Connor.
Yes.
Twelve As.
Motion carries. Bills are approved. There is no need for closed session this evening.
We'll adjourn.
There's been a motion, there's been a motion to adjourn by Alderman Hartburns, seconded by Alderman Jenkins. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Yamas.
Yes.
Garza.
Yes.
Alderman Messiakos.
Yes.
Alderman Denell.
Yes.
Alderman Franco.
Yes.
Alderman Seville.
Yes.
Alderman Hartburns.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Alderman Buck.
Yes.
Alderman Loft.
Yes.
Alderman Jenkins.
Yes.
Alderman O'Connor.
Yes.
Twelve As, sorry.
Motion carries. This meeting is adjourned. Happy Thanksgiving. Be safe, everyone. And we'll see you guys uh next, next Tuesday.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.